Okay, it is six o'clock and I will call the annual school district meeting and budget hearing to order. And first up is, everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next step is the election of a chairperson. I will open nominations for election of a chairperson for the annual meeting. Are there any nominations from the floor?
I'll nominate Lance Traup as our chairperson for this meeting.
Okay, we have a first and a second. I'll seek a motion at this time now to close nominations. All in favor of closing nominations, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. So now, we have the first and a second for myself as chairperson. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. So I will act as the chair. The chair designates Cassie Peck as secretary for this annual meeting. And the chair designates Cassie Peck and Josh Vigut to assist in the voting process and to tally votes at this meeting if necessary. The thirty-first annual meeting minutes that are included in the handout materials will be entered into the record. A motion is not necessary for that. And that will bring us then to the state of the district presentation. Mr. Bushman.
Well, good evening. I'm excited to be delivering my first ever state of the district message. When I first heard that I'd be delivering remarks, my mind went, what message I should deliver to the district? And I began thinking, I wonder what our staff would say about our current state of the district? So, from a leadership position, I thought, I'll ask. So I did a unscientific, somewhat random sample survey of thirty different people. And I asked them a couple of different questions. And it was, what are you really proud about the district and what do you like? And what are some things that you'd like to see different? And I took all of the data from those folks and I plugged it into Gemini, which is an AI-generated machine, to come up with the results that they had. So there was two themes that came out of the Gemini program. The first one, and this is the positives, staff and community relationships. Strong bonds between staff, students, and community are evident. The second one was student success. The organization is focused on student achievement, providing pathways to graduation and to meeting the needs of our students. The struggles, financial constraints. Finances are a recurring concern, impacting staffing, resources, and program sustainability. And staffing challenges, uncertainty, support, and retention issues are common in relation to staffing. So, pretty accurate with what the general feeling was from the folks that I talked to with. Anecdotally, the staff that I spoke with all placed student experiences and well-being at the top of their list, which, as leader in the district, I was very proud of. However, I decided to do a cross-reference study, again, non-scientific, this was not random whatsoever, and I asked my daughter what she liked most about the district. Currently, she's a junior at Wausau West. She had two responses for me. The first one was, the staff at school really truly care about me as a person. And number two, there are so many classes and activities to choose from. Again, this non-scientific study could easily be picked apart, however, I think it gives us some insight into the inner workings of our district. While we know that we have room to grow and that we're always searching to get better, we have a district filled with staff who care about students and student success. And, we have students who feel valued and are provided amazing opportunities every day. It's my goal to be part of a district where every student who walks through our buildings has the same response to that question that my daughter did. And Wausau does a great job with this. As the district moves into the upcoming years, there are many happenings occurring throughout the district, as you all know. I'm going to highlight just a few of them. One, we have an interim superintendent who's into the position this year. I've really enjoyed this position. It's been a whirlwind of learning. However, with that position, there have been some changes within our central office structures. We have a new administrative organizational chart that went into effect at the district leadership level. This was completed in an effort to maximize efficiency through streamlining in our systems. We knew this would cause some discomfort as a new way of doing business. But I feel confident about the system that is developing and I'm excited about the future. We have great people in positions to do great things. A thank you to the community for their investment and generosity via the $120 million referendum that's passed. The district has some amazing construction projects that have come to completion and our facilities look great. However, construction continues and more projects are in the process of being completed. The largest and most visible of our projects have included John Muir, School of Forest in Wausau West, as well as significant work to our high school athletic fields. More work is being completed at John Muir. Forest Man is starting their construction, as well as others. In the near future, we're hoping to host several board meetings at our schools to showcase to our community the improvements that have been made. The district is taking part in an advisory elementary task force with a demographer. The district has been working with forty-five community members to determine the best direction for our district as it pertains to our elementary school footprint. This group will be presenting their recommendations to the board in the summer of this year. Additionally, as part of the process, the district is engaging in an elementary building assessment to evaluate the current state of our building and determine long-term capital improvement planning and how it ties into our elementary footprint. Important to note, it has been our goal to have the task force be an extremely transparent process throughout its entirety. All information for the task force is posted on the district website. We know that with discussions of school consolidations and closures, that there are a lot of feelings and emotions associated, and we want to be respectful of families. It will be difficult. It will be important to continue to remember that as the difficult decisions are made, they are made in an attempt to grow our district to be as strong as possible and provide the best outcome for our students, our staff, and our community. The district continues to plan for a community summit to engage a large group of community members into the beginning of a strategic planning process. We're planning on hosting the summit to occur at the start of the second semester. Some of you may remember, the district took part in this type of activity in 2011, resulting in the development of our eight shared key interests. Like many school districts in the state, our budgetary struggles continue to provide significant challenges. The district currently has $1.48 million budget deficit for the 24-25 school year. This deficit will be absorbed through our fund balance, which fortunately, we are able to do this year. However, as we move forward, this will become increasingly problematic. Unfortunately, in looking into future years, we are projecting a continued deficit budget next year and into future years. I do want to say I'm so proud of our district and the amazing young people, and it educates and graduates each year. However, we have continued to struggle with finances. We have continually done more with less. At some point, we'll be forced into examining programs and making the least bad decision in order to continue functioning. This is not a position that any school district wants to be in. In summary, while the financial picture is not uplifting and will continue to need thoughtful analysis, I want to point out that it is the thousands of interactions on a daily basis that make our district what it is. I've had the opportunity to be in every one of our buildings over the last three weeks, and to say that our staff is impressive would be an understatement. From pre-K to high school, I've been able to witness our staff guiding, instructing, helping, and caring for our students. I witnessed our students learning, laughing, smiling, crying, and being cared for. While we know that we are facing challenges with our financial picture and operational logistics, to see the human element at work in our buildings provides me with hope and optimism and allows me to say that the state of our district is strong and that I will continue to expect great things from the Wausau School District into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer John Keesher will now read the treasurer's report, which includes the general checking account for the school district.
This is the treasurer's report. Fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. Beginning cash balance and investments, July 1, 2023, $34,357,231.59. Ending cash balance and investments, June 30th, 2024, $34,090,619.61. And this includes Fund 10, Fund 21, Fund 27, Fund 29, Fund 50, and Fund 80.
Thank you, John. Motion is not necessary. Next, Noel Torson will now read the other post-employment benefits report.
Other post-employment benefits, as of June 30th, we had a balance of $4,830,441.4. Investmentary returns, July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, were $361,130.29. We had dividends, $184,078.34. Unrealized gains and losses, $328,258.3. We had long-term realized loss, $135,798.99. And fees of $15,407.9. Tour claims, disbursements for health claims for other post-employment benefits were $1,591,833.48. We add 5.5% of all claims to this fund each year to be in compliance with Fund 73. And it's invested by PMA, following the board-approved investment guidelines, with a goal of 95% fixed income and 5% cash. If I would take any questions, if you could have them.
Any questions from board members or anyone else? Thank you, Noel. Motion is not necessary. Now we will have the budget hearing on the proposed 2024-2025 budget. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Vigut, Assistant Superintendent of Operations.
Thank you, Mr. Traup. Thank you for being here tonight. And because I always forget at the end, I would like to thank Noel Torson, Jen Bonkey, and the entire business office for all their work putting together the budget. They do a fantastic job. So we look at this every month, but a reminder of where we are in the budget calendar. Our budget is basically a twelve-month process. At the end of October, you will adopt the final budget and the district tax levy, and pretty much immediately, we'll begin working on future budgets. So tonight, we will discuss the remaining budget timelines, review state funding of public schools in general and at our school, or at our district, look at fund budgets and levy information, and of course, answer any questions you may have. So looking at school funding, and an easy way to think about it, in terms of our operating referendum, so Fund 10, that's our main operating fund. You have your full revenue limit, which makes up most of your general fund. A big portion of that is made up by general state aid, and the remainder is the general fund levy amount, so what we ask of the taxpayers to support our district. This year, our per pupil revenue limit number is $12,530. The general state aid amount is $9,676. And the remaining portion, or the levy amount, is $2,854. So 77% of our revenue for this portion of the general fund is from state aid. So that is a, continues a trend that we've seen of state aid increasing over time, as our relative tax burden has gone down. And this is an explanation of how we got from last year's per pupil revenue limit number to this year's. We have recurring exemptions of $1, along with the known $325 per pupil revenue limit increase and $756 in non-recurring exemptions, which gets us to this year's number of $12,530. Talk a little bit about state funding of public schools. So you can see highlighted or squared in red there, what happened to our per pupil revenue limit numbers this year. There was an increase of $325 per pupil, no categorical aid increase, which is what's listed on the bottom. I'd like to draw your attention specifically to '21, '22, and '22, '23, when there was no increase in school district funding. We did, at that time, have SRO funding, but that is sunsetting here at the end of the week, pretty much. So we will not have that, and that was one-time funding, so it really doesn't help with ongoing operational expenses. When we talk about our $1.5 million budget deficit and why so many schools in our region and our state are going to operational referendum, this is what we're looking at, funding not keeping up with our cost or inflation, which we will look at a little later. So, some assumptions about, or some information about the budget and what is included, the per pupil revenue limit increase, the 2021 operational referendum. But then you have the chart down below showing our revenue limit and kind of pegged to inflation since 2006, 2007, just showing that it's not keeping up. We'll talk about specific numbers on the next slide. And then what's going to happen in the next month before we bring the final budget in front of you, because some of the information you're looking at tonight could change. Some staffing shifts may still occur. We will get the certified district property values. Right now, we are working out for an estimate. We will get the official state equalization aid final certification. We just had the third Friday pupil count, but we will get the certification on that. What that impacts is our enrollment numbers, or what the state calls "membership." And your membership for your budget is based on a three-year rolling average. We do, we are in a state of, over ten years now, of declining enrollment, but that is somewhat balanced out by both declining enrollment exemptions and the fact that it is that three-year rolling average. And then we will also get our final dollar amount for vouchers for parental choice. So what that is, is that is an amount that the district levies, and then the district receives that money, sends it to the state, and the state sends that money to private schools. That is for students attending private schools who qualify for vouchers. So it's not money that the district sees, that is money that the district taxes, that is then passed on to private schools. And that amount is, it's not up to us, we are told the amount that we will tax for that. A little bit more specific on money we've missed out on through inflation. These calculations were baseline to 2010, 2011, 2011, 2012, excuse me, and just show the amount of money we've missed out on. And this is just assuming that school funding would have increased only at inflation-level numbers over the last thirteen years. So I think it's important to note what's happened over time and what's happened just the last couple of years. This year's alone, we are short over $11 million compared to inflation. In the last thirteen years, we are short over $46 million for inflation. Excuse me. We talked about this at the last meeting, but when we look at our tax allocations for all the various cities, townships, and villages that make up our district, we will get the final values for certified value in October. Right now, we are projecting an increase of 9.98%, up to $6,177,521,343. And that follows, I think last year was almost a 9% increase, and the year before was over 11. So it's three years of relatively high property value increases in this area. And at the bottom, you will see the three main levies, the general fund, debt service, community service levies. And at the end, at the bottom right, you have that $45 million number that we will dig into a little later. Just important to note that our overall levy, so our overall tax ask, is going down by 7.72%, almost $4 million. And that number will be finalized based on all the information we said was still incoming. So that'll be finalized and presented to you in October. Next three slides, I'll just touch on briefly. These are maps showing how we compare to the rest of the state. We are right in the middle there, that large district at the top of Marathon County. This just shows that we are positively aided, meaning we get, we get more aid than some of the districts around us. You can see in purple there, those districts get no aid, meaning every dollar they have comes from taxpayers. And what this means is that our property values, while increasing, are still below kind of the state average or the rate of increase in these other areas. This just shows how much of our budget comes from aid during this year, and this is the most recent data available. We were in that 50% to 75%, so 50% to 75% of our general fund budget comes from aid. As you just saw, we are now over 77%. So if this map stayed the same, we'd move to the dark blue. And then, we talked about our declining enrollment the last decade, and this shows that we are not alone in that. This shows district change relative in membership between '21, '22, and '22, '23. Now, this is that three-year rolling average, but you can see that along with the number of districts in the state, we do have declining enrollment. So specifically speaking about Fund 10, important to remember that Fund 10 is our main operating fund. Fund 27 is special education. You will be looking at community service fund, Fund 80, and then our debt service fund, so that's Funds 38 and 39. And those are the levies we'll be asking you to look at tonight. So our projected 24-25 revenue sources, we have the property tax levy of $20,597,589. You can see that equalization aid is up to $76 million. And then you have other state aids, per pupil adjustable aid and deductible receipts included in that is our federal grants. So you can see that that is going down significantly year over year, and that, for the most part, is related to the end of SRO funding that we talked about. So you'll see overall total revenues of $117,141,590 and a net revenue decrease of $286,000. So even though the per pupil revenue limit went up, we have an overall revenue decrease. Expenditures, I'd like to show you the amount that's in salaries and benefits. So this year, almost $92,077,000, 77% of the budget is in salaries and benefits, which means that, you know, even though we have not been able to give our staff CPI-level salary increases over the last two years, it is an increased part of our budget, which means that we have less money to do everything else with. Total expenditures for this year will be, in the general fund, will be $118,625,616, for a net expenditure increase of $481,000. So our expenditures are going up, revenue's going down. This is what's leading to that budget deficit that we've talked so much about. It's important to note, grant funds, although decreased this year, still significant, $6 million in the general fund and $2 million in Fund 27, the special education fund. And these grants support a number of initiatives throughout the district. Energy exemptions. A number of years ago, the district was able to take advantage and do some energy efficiency improvement projects. And so for the last ten years, we have asked the taxpayers to help support those projects. And this one actually, Phase 2 will be paid off with this levy, and then Phase 3, we'll retire at the end of the 2026 levy. So that just, again, helped with energy efficiency projects that we did throughout the district. Community service fund, Fund 80, supports a number of programs that are available both to the community and to people in the district. Couple examples of that are G2M program out of school in Richmond, the Amazing Planetarium at Wausau West, our school resource officer program, and a little bit of maintenance. It's important to note that a couple months ago, we did bring the school resource officer program in front of you, so that portion of the levy is going up. There is a limit to what can be done through the community service fund. Some things that can be done, a lot of schools, especially near us, are doing middle school athletics through community service fund. Some things cannot be done if they mostly benefit just our district specifically, such as crossing guards. Those cannot be paid out of the community service fund. So the main change here is in that SRO program, up to $270,000, and that is what is driving the new total tax levy of $792,200. Our mill rate, our mill rate over the last fifty years has been, you know, as high as almost $21, and now this year, it'll be down to $741. And if we just focus on that area that's been circled, you can see that over the last ten years specifically, we've really had significant decreases in our mill rates. That's for a number of reasons, increased state aid and increasing property values, while our tax levy has not grown at a proportional rate. So just walk through what are the actual levies in each of the main funds. General fund levy, again, that $20,597,589 amount. Debt service fund, oh, I wanted to point out that the dollar change for that levy is down almost $4 million. So that's our general fund levy, and it's down very significantly, 16%. Debt service fund will stay almost the same as last year. That's where we are paying back these capital referendums, and we continue to use debt defeesence to help prepay our debt. That will be $24,373,765, and the community service fund levy will be $792,200, for a total mill rate of $7.41 and a total decrease of 7.72% in our total levy. I think, oh, one more slide. This just explains the change between last year's levy, which was $8.83, or last year's mill rate, excuse me, which was $8.83, and this year's mill rate. So we did have an increase in the revenue limit, increase in non-recurring exemptions, but then a much more significant increase in equalization aid and property value. So those are the things that will then bring the levy, the mill rate, back down. And then you arrive at that $7.41 amount. I know that was a lot. Any questions on the budget? Okay?
Since the increase in property value, how does that affect us, that it's increasing?
It's a great question. So all we control as a district and you as the board is the amount that we, the levy that we set. And really, for the most part, especially in the general fund, that's set for us by the state. So we don't, someone's property value is going up, does not mean that their taxes from the school district are going up. In fact, we are taxing less than we taxed last year. But it's a great question, because we get it all the time.
So basically, when the property value goes up, assuming we don't tax or levy more, it just means the mill rate goes down?
Exactly. Yep.
Because we can't tax more.
Right.
We need more students to get our fund to go up, right?
Or we could go to operational referendum, and then you could tax more.
Right.
How more students would be able to tax more?
That's a, it's a complicated thing. You would have additional membership in your overall revenue limit, so then your total general fund revenue would go up, and you would have additional amount that you could tax as a result of just having more kids in the district. Yes?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to old business, but there is no old business. So we move right into new business. I'm going to seek a number of motions on the resolutions. I will start with the tax levy for general fund and community service fund. I'm seeking a motion regarding the tax levy for general fund and community service fund, which includes sites, buildings, maintenance, and community activities in the amount of $20,597,589 to be adopted as the tax levy for the general fund, and $792,200 for the community service fund for the 2024-2025 school fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Anyone who signed up over there can vote on this. That includes you too, Pat, since you signed up at the last minute. Okay.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That resolution carries. Next, I'm seeking a motion regarding the tax levy for debt service fund, which include all long-term debt, and that the amount of $24,373,765 be adopted as the tax levy for the debt service funds for the 2024-2025 school fiscal year.
So moved. Second.
Second.
First and a second. Any questions on the tax levy for debt service fund? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That resolution carries. Next is a resolution regarding school lunches. I'm seeking a motion to furnish school lunches to the students of the school district and appropriate funds for that purpose. The school lunch program is self-funded through sales of tickets and federal and state subsidies and is accounted for in Fund 50.
So... Second.
A first and a second. Any questions regarding the school lunch resolution? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That resolution carries. Next is a resolution regarding reimbursement of expenses for school board members. I'm seeking a motion to authorize the payment of actual and necessary expenses of a school board member when traveling in the performance of duties.
The move to authorize the payment of actual and necessary expenses of a school board member when traveling in the performance of duties.
A second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Questions or comments on that one? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That resolution carries. Next is a resolution regarding salaries of school board members. School board members have received a $3,100 annual salary since 2005, and I'm seeking a motion regarding school board member salaries.
The move that the school board annual salaries be established at $3,100 for the 24, for the 2024 and 2025 school fiscal year.
A second? Any questions or comments regarding salaries of school board members? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That resolution carries. Our next resolution is regarding the continuing authorization for the Board of Education to lease suitable buildings and/or land for school sites. Seeking a motion pursuant to section, you can read it all if you want. Give me a break. Seeking a motion pursuant to Section 120.10 sub 5 of the Wisconsin statutes, that the Board of Education be granted authority through the time of the next annual meeting to lease suitable buildings and/or land for school sites.
So... Second.
A first and a second. Questions or comments on that resolution? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That resolution carries. Next is a resolution regarding continuing authorization for the Board of Education to convey partial interest in real estate. I'm seeking a motion pursuant to Section 120.10 sub 12 of the Wisconsin statutes, that the Board of Education be granted authority through the time of the next annual meeting to convey small parcels and/or easements in school lands to governmental authorities or public utilities under circumstances in which property belonging to the school district is not needed for school purposes, and in which the value of consideration to be received in exchange for an easement does not exceed $20,000.
So... Second.
A first and a second. Any questions, comments on that resolution? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That resolution carries. And our last resolution is to establish the 2025 annual meeting, seeking a motion pursuant to Section 120.08 sub 1 sub A of the Wisconsin statutes, to authorize the Board of Education to establish a date and time of the 2025 annual meeting.
So... Second.
First and a second. Any questions regarding the resolution for the 2025 meeting? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That resolution carries. And I then seek a motion to adjourn.
So... Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.